Good evening. Today's Monday, November 16, 2020, and welcome to the regular board meeting of the San Benito Board of Trustees. By video conference or telephone conference, and I call this meeting to order at exactly 5:32 PM. Roll call. Ms. Weaver?
Present.
Ms. Silva?
Present.
Mr. Corona?
Present.
Ms. Yannis?
Present.
Ms. Lopez?
Present.
Mr. Moreno?
Present.
Dr. Carmen?
Present.
And David Flores?
Present.
Thank you. Let's move on to agenda item 1.2. There's no public comment. Let's move on to agenda 2, Special Recognition. 2.1, the Miller Jordan Middle School LOC C Purple Star Designation. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. Mr. Lopez, I believe we have Ms. Alvarado, who is going to give us some information on the recent distinction that Miller Jordan Middle School received its Purple Star designation. There she is. Ms. Alvarado, we are on the agenda item for Miller Jordan Middle School Purple Star Designation.
Thank you. Can y'all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. All right, so I'm excited to present an award that over the summer, Dr. Carmen, you know, he gets a lot of information from TEA. And he sent it to me and I said, you know what, we're going to, we're going to get somebody to apply. We know we have a lot of schools that may be able to apply. So Mrs. Lisa Gomez, our Director of Secondary Instructional Implementation, along with Ms. Fernandez, Principal of Miller Jordan, completed the application process. And we heard a couple of weeks ago that Miller Jordan was a purple, received the Purple Star Designation. So we are so proud. And let me tell you a little bit about the criteria. Yes, let's get on the round of applause. Yay. There's several criteria, and one of them is they must designate a campus-based military liaison that must support military-connected students and their families. Other professional development opportunities for staff members on issues related to the military-connected students. That's number one. Number two, they must create and maintain an easily accessible webpage that includes information for military-connected students and their families. Number three, must have a campus transition program that includes introductions to school environment and processes. Student leaders or ambassadors should be-
...accessible webpage that includes information for military-
Sorry.
Sponsored by campus-based staff member and participating in organizing and hosting a newcomer social event, facilitating guided tours of the campus, and accompanying new students to lunch for the first week of school. And number four, a resolution to showing, showing support for military-connected students and families. Participation in Month of Military Child or Military Family Month, or a partnership with a community, with a school, I'm sorry, liaison officer to encourage and provide opportunities for active-duty military members. So we're excited that Miller Jordan Middle School is going to be a Purple Car, Purple Star campus-designated school for the next few years. At this time, I'd like to present Principal Joanne Fernandez with her Purple Star and her certificate. There she is. Show me your Purple Star and your certificate. And also, Mrs. Lisa Gomez is here with us. I want to recognize her. Director of our Secondary Instructional Implementation, Mrs. Lisa Gomez.
Good.
Really, really proud of our Miller, Miller Jordan. We're going to have a banner made. We're going to recognize that campus. And I know TEA might be sending us some stuff. I'm going to contact them tomorrow, but if not, we're going to shine out there and get that banner out there and really show our, and I wanted to bring it to you all, so that the community listening can see how this designation, that's very important, and we never must forget, forget our military individuals that serve our country. And I always say this, that there, we're here today for those who serve our country. So we thank everybody who's listening, who's a veteran, for an active duty. Ms. Fernandez, would you like to say just a few words really quickly?
Sure. This really is a great honor, not just for teachers and students, but for our community as well. Mr. Barlow has done an outstanding job in promoting and developing the program, the LOC C program, and developing those leadership skills and character traits in our students that will help them to be successful in life. So I'm so very proud of him, our students and our campus, and we are beyond honored to receive such a great distinction. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Mrs. Gomez, please, a few words.
This district is very privileged to have that distinction and designation. I think that that is attributed to Ms. Fernandez's leadership. And hopefully, we'll have other campuses do the same, and also thank all of those who have served the military as well. Thank you.
Congratulations to both of you.
Yes.
Congratulations. Great job.
Congratulations, ladies.
Well, there's some technical difficulties, and I want to go ahead and extend a huge thank you, and it truly is a blessing. I've seen this transition. You know, being on the board for a term, going on my second term, I've seen the transition, you know, and to see the growth of our, of our district. And it's, it's amazing to see great, great distinctions like this come to fruition. And I think our community is, will, will, will once again, you know, embrace it like they've done. And, you know, we just got to continue, continue moving forward, and we'll put our, you know, of course, our best interest in the kids first and foremost. But this is just a testament, and I want to thank Ms. Fernandez, you know, the whole, the whole C-suite as well, and Mr. Barlow for doing a fantastic job, and really emphasizing on the importance of developing the whole student. So I just want to thank you guys and congratulations. And like I said, you know, we're closer and closer to becoming the gold standards in all areas of education. So God bless you all. Thank you so much.
I think we're waiting for a video. Is that, is that correct, Ms. Alvarado? Okay.
The Purple Star Award is given to any campus. It could be elementary, middle school, high school. If that campus provides any means necessary for any child who has a military member in their family. If they're active duty, and we are to provide them a place to come and talk, maybe to ask questions. If the student just doesn't feel comfortable on campus, you know, we provide them somewhere to come and feel comfortable enough to, to open up and talk to us. Because it's not easy, especially things right now, like with COVID, but also with mom or dad being halfway across the country or halfway across the world. It's not easy for any kid. So for us to be able to provide a place for all our students, it's, it's a good thing. And I think we should do it more often. Stay strong. It's, it's not easy. You know, myself being deployed. It's not easy if you're deployed or if you're back at home. Everyone's thinking of each other, and especially during these times. It's not hard, just don't forget. You know, write them a letter, send them an email. Whatever you think that you need to do to know that they're still thinking of each other. That is, it's not hard. And also, that's why we have the programs like what we have here with LOC C. We'll, we'll provide those kids with somewhere to go, someone to talk to, and show them that we're there to support them, and their families as well.
That was great. Okay, so let's move on to the-
Mr. Lopez, if I may, before we move on, I'd also like to acknowledge again, Ms. Lisa Gomez, the Secondary Instructional Director who completed the forms and added the links for the application.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Moreno. Anybody, any other board member that want to make a comment before we move on?
No, that was a great job and honor to, to get, be selected. So great job. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Very inspirational. Yes, thank you all so much. Okay, let's move on to agenda item number three, Action Agenda. 3.1, Discussion of Possible Action or Approved Gifts or Requests for the 2021 School Year. Vicki, Ms. Vicki, please?
Yes, sir. We have three donations. First one is for the after-school program in the amount of $150. The next one is for the family community engagement, for a total of $3,600. And the last one is for Oscar de la Fuente Elementary for $300.
I have a motion, please, to approve. Okay, I got, I got a motion by Ms. Weaver. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, I got a second by Ms. Silva. All in favor with a show of hands, please?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, let's move on to agenda 3.2, Discussion of Possible Action or Approved Budget Amendments for 2021 School Year. Ms. Vicki?
We have four budget amendments that we're taking to the board tonight. The first one is for the child nutrition program. We purchased a tortilla machine, food truck, heat wells, television, and portable heating tables. But that one's going to come out of fund balance from the child nutrition, which has a very healthy fund balance, so it's a very good use of those funds. Next one is for the Sullivan and High School projects that carried over from one fiscal year over to the other. So we are also pulling out, or, I'm mistaken, $200,000 to complete those projects. And that is also coming out of fund balance. The next one is for CTE. That one is within the budget. We're moving from Function 11 to 34 to accommodate for their vehicle and bus needs. And the last one is for the band. They are moving money from staff travel to instructional supplies.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Can I have a motion, please?
I have, I have a question.
Okay.
Can you hear me? I'm not sure you can. What I wanted to know is, how much do we have in the fund balance?
As of the last audit, we had $26 million unassigned fund balance. The policy requires that we have 10% to 15%, so that is very, very healthy, very healthy fund balance.
Okay. On the merchandise, that's covering the cost of the tortilla machine and so forth. Has this merchandise been purchased already, or is it going to be purchased, or?
It has been purchased, ma'am.
It has been purchased. Okay. And then, on the second, where you have the local funds in reference to the construction in progress. Yeah, according to what we got on Friday, there's, it says construction and 5,000 plus. What does the 5,000 plus mean?
So anything that costs $5,000, any individual item would have to be coded as a 6-6, which is that third set of numbers in the two account, 1998166. So those tortilla machines, the heating wells, all of those were items that were purchased that cost over $5,000 each.
Okay. And on the contract services on the, on the, on the tortilla and all that, on that machine and so forth, is that not coming from the contract services that we have currently with the district, with, with the, with the people we already have services with? Is that not, is that not covered, or is that part of that?
Well, we purchase it so that the district stays with it. So they have purchased it on our behalf. The district already has those items. And so we are, we did not plan to buy those items when we first set out, set up the budget. So we're pulling in those funds so that we can accommodate for it.
And we checked to see on the cost of the cover of the tortilla machine versus purchasing the tortillas. Is that cheaper? Would it have been cheaper or not? On the cover of the cost of the tortilla machine, would it have been cheaper to maybe have, did we ever like figure out if it was cheaper to maybe purchase the tortillas already made, rather than to have gotten a machine versus that?
But they're fresher. Remember, these are fresh tortillas coming out of, you know, freshly made versus the ones that you buy that have already been packaged and, you know, been there sitting in the shelves. But I know we all eat that, but this would be more nutritious for the students, I would say.
I would think it's almost the same, you purchasing, because they have expiration dates. So I would think that that would be, but I would just wanting to know if it was versus the cost. This is what I'm, I'm looking at cost. I'm getting. Of course, we want to give our children nutritious food, but we're not going to give them expired food. And we wouldn't be purchasing expired food. It would all be nutritional. I'm just, I'm just wondering if they, if they make any type of, of, you know, whether the cost versus the cost of actually getting a machine made, or one that was going to make.
Ms. Yannis, if I can interject for a quick second?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the tortilla machine is one of the innovations from SFE that they presented on in their, and it's in their contract. The, the cost of the tortilla maker, it will take, you know, four years plus to pay for itself. It's, it's not going to save us money day one. But the intent is to improve quality for our students, to get more kids eating our lunches. And when it comes off that machine, it's, it's something else. It's, it's, they're pretty good.
They'll be smelling them.
They, they will smell them being cooked. I mean, it will, it will entice them to come eat them. And that's part of it, you know, get the kids interested in it. But it's going to take, if I remember correctly, four-plus years to make that money back. So, but eventually it will. Yes, ma'am.
Yes. This budget, if I understand it correctly, runs from July 31st to June 30th. Is that correct?
From July 1st to June 30th.
July 1st, not 31st. July 1st? Okay. So this budget was already approved with the, with the previous board members. Is that correct? I'm assuming so. Yeah. I'm going to go ahead and abstain, because of course, I wasn't a board member, and I didn't get to see the budget before. So I'm going to go ahead and abstain off, off of this.
Ms. Lopez, if I may, can I, may I make a comment? And just, just, may I speak?
Yes, sir, you can.
Just, just a comment, and just for the record, like my, like they, like you, I'm sure all of you have heard, fool me once, shame on you, fool me twice, shame on me. I've dealt with this company in my, my, my current district at Riondo. And this company left us $480,000 in the hole. I know that, that, you know, San Benito is, it's much bigger, and this comment is not only for our, our board, but also for Mr., for Dr. Carmen. I tend to agree with, with a comment that Ms. Yannis made in reference to that tortilla machine. Do we really need a tortilla machine? And if the expense is already there, that's fine. But I feel that a lot of money is being spent, and this is what this company does. They're very expensive, okay? And basically, they utilize the school district to do their propaganda for them. And, and they push, and you know, I see here, tortilla machines, televisions, other things like heat wells, food trucks, that makes sense. Heating tables, that makes sense. We want, we want food for our kids, and it's going to be temperature-approved. But I think that that's a lot of money that goes into basically pushing for the company. I have also seen the presentation of the food is phenomenal. I'm not going to lie. It, it, it looks great, okay? And then again, I mean, I, I've seen it, I, I saw it at our campus. They, they, they give it to the kids, and it's thrown away. I, for one, just am of the opinion that, you know, hiring this company, this outsourcing company versus having the service done by existing people that we have on staff, that's a done deal. We already, that's already been discussed, and that, you know, we had nothing to do with that, and it is what it is. But I really feel that, that for us to spend this, this great deal of money, once again, to, with a purpose of ensuring appropriate nutrition for our kids, I don't think there should be a limit on the money. However, when kids are throwing away the food, that's a waste. And I'm concerned. And so in the long run, you know, we, we aren't, we haven't, San Benito CISD hasn't had that experience yet, because our kids haven't come to school because of COVID. They've been out since last spring. And so, you know, we, I, I agree that we, we need to give them the fair chance, but I would like later on in the future, if we can, to monitor the amount of food that's being thrown away. And again, is it gonna, I, I understand that our fund balance is, is, is doing great, and the, the fund balance of the child nutrition program is doing great. But, but I, by all means, we need to continue. In order to keep that fund balance, balance healthy, we need to make sure that we're spending the money appropriately. So I just, I just encourage it later on, as, as we go down the, the wire, working as a, a, a team that we, we monitor, because like, like they, in everything else, if it doesn't get monitored, you know, we're not going to be, we're not going to be content with, with the results. So that's all I have to say for the record.
Yeah.
Mr. Lopez?
I want, I want to thank you, Mr. Moreno, for that. Just, just, just a real quick synopsis on how this whole presentation, the whole situation came about. You know, of course, we had the passing, you know, of our, of our great leader that was there for child nutrition for a very long time. And this whole transition happened. And yeah, you're right. I mean, you know, there was a lot of parameters put into place. We, as a, as a district, I think protected ourselves extremely well, because they guaranteed us a certain amount. But, you know, one thing to keep in, 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 you know, keep in mind, Mr. Moreno, is that, you know, we only have a one-year deal. So you know what? If they come in there blowing smoke and doing all kinds of stuff and showing us that they're, they're the greatest thing since sliced bread, and all of a sudden, it doesn't happen, and they don't provide what they said they were going to provide. So we have a safety blanket there, you know?
Okay.
So, so, but you know, but one of the things was the innovative ways of them wanting to teach our kids nutritional values and growing the whole program of, of, you know, empowering our kids and, and showing them, you know, and developing these, these programs through potentially maybe some child nutrition, some CTE development. So that's one of the reasons why it was, it was advantageous for us to go that route. But yeah, I mean, you know, all of us have our concerns about it. It is, you know, it is what it is. You hear, you know, from both sides, but, you know, we also heard from the Fresnos, you know, they love it over there. But at the end of the day, you know what? We can take care of it. We can take care of it here in San Benito. So whatever happens in another school district happens, but
Correct.
the thing is, the, the thing is that, you know, we're going to be on this board. We're going to work together as a team. We're going to be good stewards of our money. So there is safety blankets out there, but I want to appreciate your comment, you know, Mr. Moreno. I really appreciate that. Yes, Ms. Lopez?
Okay. So just like you said, you know, we want to be good stewards of our taxpayer money. I think it's very important that we also know, one of the things that you all said at the beginning, when you wanted to do contract work with SFE, you all said that this will bring us profits. So my question to you is, how much profits have come in because of this company?
Well, we can- And the return of investment will happen on the latter part of the year. So right now, the, the return is not there just yet, but we still have the rest of the fiscal year too, to make sure that that does happen.
Okay. And so right now, we have funds available, and how's this, is this being paid? Is it all federal money, or is it also local money? State and local?
These are fund balance money from the federal side, because food service is federal. But on top of that, the food service balance has to remain at a certain level. After it exceeds a certain point, TEA does require that we spend it down. So this is part of the spending down.
Okay. And how much do we get yearly?
From the child nutrition, it's based off of how many meals we're, we're serving, because it's a reimbursement.
By the student count, daily student count?
By the meal register.
How do we, how much did we get last year? Do you know?
The entire food service budget is approximately $8 million.
Eight million? Okay. And, and I also agree, you know, like I said, about the taxpayer money being used wisely. I would have preferred that this money could have been used for hotspots for kids. You all know that there's a lot of struggling kids in the outskirts, in the country area that are struggling. They're going and getting hotspot wifi from the school buses, you know, but to have them out there all day, I would have preferred that this money could have been invested into the tools that the kids need. I hear teachers and, you know, different campuses saying that some of the kids are, are struggling. They're not doing their assignments, because they don't have internet access. And so to me, a priority would have been taking care of the kids' academic needs, and then if we needed to get a tortilla machine, we could have invested in it later.
Unfortunately, ma'am, the, with the child nutrition funds, we can only spend it on child nutrition.
I was just going to say that. It's, it's got the budget for each section, so that was just for the food nutrition. The other, what you're asking for, Ms. Lopez, is from a different budget. But yeah, that's true, what Ms. Pedestre-
I do like, Mr. Lopez's clarification. I'm sorry to interject. I thank you for the clarification that we do have a year. And at the end of that year, like, like you said, Ms. Vicki, that, you know, if these funds are not coming in, and, and, and we're, we're at least monitoring it, and if we deem that it's not, it's not good for our kids or good for the district, we've got other options.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. And if they're having issues, Ms. Lopez, if they're having issues with hotspots and all that stuff, there's, you know, they got to follow the chain of command and talk to their, their local principal, and their principal needs to bring it up to Dr. Carmen. You know, the, the communication internally is extremely, from what I've heard, is, is, is nothing but, you know, but excellent. So if their, if our kids are having issues connecting, then we, that needs to be brought up.
Yes, they do. And I've encouraged parents to go ahead and talk to their, their, you know, their teachers and their administrators, but however, you know, that we have a population where we have a very humble population, and people don't speak up. And so I do encourage them. However, I'm also representing the community, and that's why I'm bringing it up to you all right now.
But thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Let me just address that real quick for administration on the, on the hotspots. And we initially ordered a number based on our surveys. We gave those out to every family who came up to pick them up before the school year started. We actually had some left over. And as the school year started, parents then kept showing up, asking for these hotspots, asking for these hotspots. So we reactivated another 400 hotspots. And it took every family. Coming in now, and now they have maybe six students trying to go onto one hotspot. So we've ordered the last 100 hotspots. But it's not a shortage of money. It was a matter of not getting a response, I guess, from parents in time for us to, to order a full amount. But based on all of our requests, we have satisfied those requests. If there are families out there who still need more, like I said, I believe our last order of 100 more than covers it. But that's all based on, on parent input, parent requests. It's the best we can do with those numbers. But it's not due to a shortage of money. We, we have the funds there. We didn't want to overbuy, and of course, it paid for 1,000 more than we needed. But as we get those requests, we are filling them as quickly as we can.
There's no criteria for those hotspots?
Hey, Doc, it's also fair, it's also fair to acknowledge the fact is, our principals and our, and our local leaders on the campuses are also reaching out with the FACE program, and everybody going out and making sure that these kids do have the resources they need. So I want to applaud them for that. And they know that, you know, the board is here to support them 100% as well as administration, and I want the parents to know that too. So I appreciate your comments.
And there's no criteria for, for getting a hotspot, right? They, they just have to be a student of the district? Is that correct?
They had to be a student of the district. And there were some that were funded through the Housing Association, and if they received one from them, then we could not duplicate. Unless they had over four students or five students, they, they required a second one. But I think that was the only limitation we had, is if they already got a free one paid for by that federal money, we could not give an identical one or an act-
I see. If I may ask one more question. On the food service, where are we as far as the budget is concerned? Is it going to carry us through the year?
Oh, yes, definitely.
Okay.
It always does, ma'am. We are very responsible when it comes to spending within our budget.
Okay.
Thank you. Any more comments? Okay, can I have a motion, please, to approve?
Still moved.
I'm good. I'm gonna-
I got a motion.
I'm going to abstain from, from this one, because of course, this, this, this was approved prior to me being on the school board. And so I'm going to abstain.
Okay, thank you. Look, I have a motion in the form of, Mr. Moreno, can I have a second, please?
A second.
Okay, second by Ms. Weaver. All in favor with a show of hands? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to agenda 3.3, Discussion of Possible Action or Approved Renewal Lease Agreement between San Benito CISD and the San Benito Historical Society. Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. As you have in front of you, a one-year lease with the San Benito Historical Society. And as you're all aware, we opened up the Glander School to them, made it available to them at a $1 lease per year so that they could put the Gander Black History Museum in there where the old school was. And they've, they've done a great job getting that building ready. We had good turnouts. Prior to COVID, they had really good numbers. Since then, I know they have some limited hours, but I think it's been a real positive for our community. But I think it's been a real positive for our community to have that building there. We are just asking that the board consider renewing that lease for the next year, please.
We didn't get a copy of that lease, uh, Dr. Carmen? Did you? We did not get a copy of that lease with the attachment? Can you hear me?
Give me just one, if I can share a screen.
I I looked here. Where where is it?
It was in our notes. I saw it down the board notes.
I see it here.
Yeah.
The attachments.
You open on the bottom, you open the attachment to the very bottom of it.
We're doing it yearly because why are we doing it on a yearly basis and not like three years or or five years?
Interest, you don't want to do any type of a long term lease. Off chance that the school district would need that property. If they happen to be growth within, you know, two years, three years. And you don't want to have to go out and then end a ten year lease. So you can get that property back to build or like I said, to put a school there or whatever else might be necessary. And it's just the best interest of the district to have that flexibility. Obviously, if our numbers don't, don't go up or Roma doesn't grow, um, I would expect the board to renew that every single year. But just on the off chance, it's just, it's just best business.
Yeah.
Did you get a copy of it, Miss Yannis?
I did. They just sent it to me. Yeah, they just handed it to me. Thank you so very much. I I'll have to read that later, but uh, but in any case, this is a good deal.
Um, I had asked for a printed copy also and I don't have a copy of it.
Dr. Carmen? If if I may, can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I just have a question on that lease agreement that I'm I'm looking at it via myself on under the attachments. It uh, that that lease agreement is already in place, correct? Or is it just, it it is just going to commence? Okay, so if it's in place already, uh, we had, did it expire and now we're just renewing it?
Yes, sir. This is a renewal.
Because the data, it's blank and it dates October and we're already November.
We are.
Is that gonna be an issue?
It it is not. Uh, we initiated that lease back in October of twenty nineteen. It expired in October of twenty twenty. We have not kicked them out. Um, so we would simply put the new date effective today that the board, if if you approve it. And we would put November sixteenth on that lease agreement and then it would be twelve months from today's date.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
They have a motion approved?
I approve.
I approve. That we approve.
Okay, I got a, I got a motion by Ms. Weaver. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Second.
My goodness.
I got a second by Ms. Silver. All in favor of the show of hands? Motion carries. Thank you. It's going agenda and people for discussion, possible action to prove the option to extend the proposal of general merchandise and services for an additional one year period. Is it?
This is our annual general merchandise and services bid that we have. Um, it is a rolling bid, so. The vendors that we have around right now have placed their bid last year around this time. And we are requesting that we approve all the same vendors that we had and just extended an additional year. We have not had any issues with any of the vendors and we're very happy with what the Jolla approved last year.
I have a question, Mister Lopez.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, was there another ability for people to propose bids this year as well?
We advertise it in the newspaper so that anybody else who wants to. Um, that one is going to be coming up on December eighth. So this is just an extension. The one that we have right now is open until I believe in this week. And then we will take those to the board in the following month.
So they're going to the board?
On December eighth.
December eighth. Okay, thank you.
It's just an extension. Yes, ma'am.
But we do it often, right, Miss Vicky? Like we can, whoever wants to be a vendor, wants to tie for it, we, we bring it to the board often, correct?
Correct. We do it so that our local vendors have the ability to do business with us. And in turn, we're able to do business legally with them as well.
Okay.
So they get, they get added as as they, as they come in. Great.
Yeah, ye- yes, ma'am. Okay. Can I have a motion, please?
I make a motion and we approve that.
Okay, I have a motion by Ms. Silver. Can I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, my Mr. Moreno. All in favor of the show of hands, please? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda M three point five, discussion of possible action to approve a two week transition period. Dr. Carmen?
Sir, so as the board is aware, initially, we had asked for the additional four week transition period uh, from T E A. They approved two initially, and so we began our phase in process of bringing students back, I think face to face. And then immediately, as soon as the uh, two week transition period began, uh, we submitted our request for the additional two weeks. And uh, lo and behold, at the very end of those two weeks, Friday morning, we received approval from T E A. And they've been very, very thorough, uh, taking their time on approving these. Uh, but what this means, Ms. Alvarado can give you some, some additional information on the phase in. Um, if you need it, but what this means is instead of bringing back all students today. Um, at the elementary, we added in fifth grade to go along with pre K, kinder first and second. At the middle schools, we brought back eighth graders today. Uh, fifth and eighth are both S S I grades. They have to pass their, their star exams to move on to the next, uh, next grade level. Unless the state happens to waive it later this year. And but at this point, they need to pass those. And then we also invited back our ninth graders at V M A since they have taken of course exams. Um, so they can graduate, um, when they become seniors in three years. Uh, I do have some numbers uh, at our elementary. On the five grade levels that we have there, we have about thirty two percent of our students taking advantage of being face to face. Um, eighth grade today, eighteen point eight percent. So very, very few, very low percentages. Uh, wanted face to face. The rest are still remote. And at V M A, even though it's a hybrid model, based on the students who were invited back for the purple week this week. Uh, we're right at thirteen percent of those ninth graders showed up for face to face. So we're, we're very low with secondary. Turnout face to face, they are, they are choosing most of them still to stay remote. Um, but we did not invite back all grade levels. It is pending board motion this evening, of course. Um, should the board approve it? Next week, we'll add back in seniors, I believe. And then, um, I'm sorry, that'll be the seventh. After uh, after Thanksgiving, we'd invite back um, all, all students December seventh. So the thirtieth November would be. Our seniors and then the seventh of December would be all grade levels. Alvarado, did I get that right?
And as mentioned before, the parents will still have the option to keep their kids at home the remainder of the twenty twenty one school year, correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Dr. Carmen, you said December seventh would be when we would allow all kids to come back if they choose to?
Yes, sir. That is correct. If, if we would add in seniors, December seventh, we would open it up to all other being grade levels. So.
All the grade levels. Thank you.
Parent who wants their, their child. Yes, sir.
Dr. Carmen, that the number that you gave as far as a middle school level or junior high, uh, eighth grade, that would, that would entail. Um, B C, Miller, Jordan and Riverside, is that correct?
Yes, sir. That is correct. I think gross, we had about a hundred and thirty. Ninth graders show up today. That's, that's not a exact number, but it's very close. Hundred and thirty, hundred and forty. Um, and of course, we have over, over seven hundred eighth graders in those three middle schools combined. So that's where eighteen point eight percent came from.
And and I guess one more question that I have as far as the, the uh, the way we're servicing our kids. Uh, say we're, we're looking at those three middle school campuses. Are they all similar or are they, are they all exercising their own, their option to? To do uh, a a hybrid model or a traditional, I mean, are they all doing exactly the same thing to uh, bring in their students face to face?
So the, yes, sir, the model they're following is, um, teachers are rotating for the core classes.
Okay.
One class, we're, we are not moving kids around. Um, at least, I mean, as as it becomes safer, we will certainly do so. And without the safest mode of operation was to move one adult instead of moving eleven or twelve students. In those four classrooms and then the, the electives are taught via their computers in the classroom for the afternoon.
Okay, and I I like that, that method, but it is being done across all three campuses, correct?
I'm not aware of any variation from that, Ms. Alvarado.
Okay.
No variation.
Can you hear me?
December seventh. I'm sorry.
Yes, we can.
Oh, okay. They're working on my computer. I'm, I'm so sorry. I'm having some technical difficulties, but Mister Moreno, on your question. Um, that is correct. We're all using the same uh, model to transition students.
Thank you, Miss Alvarado.
Wait, Mister, I have a question for you. As far as, I'm sorry, Mister Lopez, as far as December seventh, if the students do come back. Are they gonna be going to one homeroom or are they gonna be exchanging classes or is it still gonna?
Uh, Mister Corona, that's a good question. We're still gonna utilize the same method that we're using right now. Um, is to transition, transit, transition them in at our middle schools. Um, and and them staying in their court, in their homeroom classroom and rotating teachers. At V M A and high school, we are allowed to use the hybrid model. So we will be having a purple, A week and B week, purple and gold week.
Thank you.
Okay, and and just for clarification, you said that the electives would be taking place at the end of the day. Uh, so does that mean that they all stay in that same classroom that they were in all day or will they be going to the, the rooms where their electives are normally taught?
They're gonna stay in their classroom, Mrs. Lopez.
Okay, and so how are y'all handling the band for that, for those kids that want to practice their band instruments?
Right, for for right now, um, they they will log on using their computers for their elective classes. And as a former band student, I know it's going to be difficult to do that. Um, they can still you, they can still use their, their instrument without blowing into the horn. Um, we're gonna be, have to be a little bit creative. Um, you know, and I know it's difficult. I did meet with the head band director. Again, we're just using this as we come in and hopefully, uh, we can soon transition um, them to, to their elective classes. But for now. Um, they will uh, be uh, having all of that uh, with their, using their devices and remotely.
When uh, when are you looking into transitioning?
Just gonna depend on the numbers, uh, our positive cases. As you can see, we've had. We're seeing now, you know, a little spike, you know, uh, not only here, but Texas wide. So. Um, for now, we're gonna just continue uh, bringing in students of the slow, the slowest we can. Uh, and then when we do have them all, we're gonna use the method that we're bringing them in that safe for all students and for our staff. Um, and then um, we will take it from there, uh, utilizing the information we get from our county. And Dr. Carmen and I speak on that. And we, we, we do brief on that every, every week.
Wonderful. And Dr. Carmen, just for the parents that are listening, I know that there's a lot of concerns about sending their kids back to school, but. Um, can you explain to the parents what y'all are doing also to prevent for, for the kids to get um. Stick with the coronavirus? At least what are some of the precautionary measures that the school district is doing?
It's a very good question, Miss Lopez. Um, so some of the P P E that we we have out there, we have uh, of course, face masks. We have face shields for our teachers. We have desk shields for our students, desk shields for our teachers. Hand sanitizer in every classroom, hand sanitizer in every office. We take temperatures of our students and screen them before they get into our school bus. If they are parent dropped, we take their temperatures and screen them at the parent drop off um, at the, at the campus. We're uh. Uh, putting into our H V A C system, I'm trying to say this right, like ionizers. Uh, Mister Pettis.
Yes, sir.
That will um, help clean the air that goes out from all of our area handlers. And we're not done with those yet. We're not done installing those yet. Uh, we anticipate having the elevens done by the first of December and then working on the, the secondary campuses. We've installed air scrubbers into an isolation room at every single one of our campuses. So if a student has any type of symptoms, we take them there immediately away from the rest of the, the class. Uh, and then take them from there to their parents to remove them from the campus. Oh.
Mrs. Alvarado?
On the, on the, on the isolation rooms, Dr. Carmen, are there like partitions?
Are there, sorry?
Are they like partitions that are set up to individually, not, not because, you know, you don't ever know if you really have it. And it could be just a cold or the flu and not actually covid. So do you? Uh, is there like partitions so that you can separate the students in this isolated room or?
You mean, it is one room, no partition, one student. Um, with an air scrubber. So there, I mean, the air's not going out anywhere. And we contact the parent immediately. We get them off campus as quickly as we can.
Yes.
The only person allowed in there is the nurse to be able to check temperatures, uh, screen for symptoms. Uh, but no, there's no partitions because there's only one student at a time in there.
At a time. Okay.
Uh, Mrs. Alvarado.
I have a question.
I have a question. Okay, go ahead. Question real quickly, because this concerns the, the middle school. Uh, this concept of rotating, the concept of rotating, uh, the teachers, they're just, they just feel a little, uh, they don't feel right doing it because they're moving from class to class. Uh, their problem is they're uh, contaminating themselves by moving from one room to the other room. They would like to know if in the middle school. They can stay within the, their one room and make that room a homeroom. And from that homeroom, these kids will all turn in on the, on the same page. For example, my uh, first period math, second period English, third period, so on and so forth. So instead of moving about, can they remain in the classroom? And allow the kids to have their homeroom. I believe the course uh, classes are taught in the morning. From eight to twelve thirty or something like that. And then the electives come on after uh, one o'clock or after lunch. Can they do that? Uh, oh, and also the transition from moving from one class to the other. It's taken four minutes. It's all it is. And so they have to pack all their belongings, all their machines and all their uh, technology. What can we do about that? If if there's a solution, can we work on it? We have three weeks before the sixth and the seventh graders return back to school. And I guess I, I couldn't hear some of that. You you said for them to be in one, I want to get that question. They, they would stay in the same homeroom. They would have a homeroom for three hours. And stayed in their room, the kids. And how would they receive their instruction? I guess I'm, I'm not understanding that part. Okay, the instruction would be that, let's say, for example, let's say, Miss Silva has a class. Miss uh, Weaver has a class. Well, she'll teach uh, from that first period will be math. So all the other four or five classes are, are having math. In other words, they'll be teaching that all the kids will be in the same page. It will all be doing math from nine to ten. From ten to to eleven, they'll be doing social studies and so on and so forth. The deal is the teachers do not want to rotate. For fear that they might. Catch the covid in another classroom or walking within the hallways. Uh, uh, that, that's something that we need to go, we need to go to the classrooms. So you can see what I'm trying to say. Because of the desk being too close to each other, you know? And it's, they having difficulty uh, seeing the boards and everything. And then to move around, the teacher to move around is um. It, they have to adjust all the other uh, screens on all the other desks and they have to move about. Can they stay in that one room with a homeroom? Does that make sense?
I don't think that's feasible.
No, it's gonna be more safer for the teacher to move instead of having all the students move from one room to another.
They're not moving. The kids are not moving. It'd be a homeroom where they'll be there for three and a half hours.
But when you get to the high school, Jenny, the teachers are only, some teachers that teach only math. Others teachers only teach uh, science.
I understand.
That can be teaching the whole subjects, this, all the subjects. So it can be done.
The kids will go into, the kids are going to their Googles. They're going to the Googles and they're taking out, you know, just like my granddaughter does. She does the math in the morning, the language arts, English or whatever, you know? No, I, I. I will talk, Miss Alvarado, Miss Alvarado, let me just say something. Let me talk to you. Let me go over there to you tomorrow. I want to show you a picture.
Well, if I'm, I guess if I may, I know there's a lot of apprehension here. You know, I I know parents are also afraid of uh, bringing their kids to school, but we just got to push the fact is that, you know, we have safe, we have safe measures put in place so everybody can be safe. Uh, not only are we, are we, are we keeping our kids safe, but we also, more importantly, have to keep our, our, our teachers and our staff safe. But that's, you know, that's the heart of the district. So the thing is, yes, there's gonna be, we're, it's, it's growing pains. You know, we support our staff. We always supported our staff, but we also support our kids and we have to provide that face to face instruction because those are instructions coming down to us. Now, you know, we can work collaboratively together and of course, all of us get several phone calls and all that, but. I think we need to come together as a team and 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 allow our administration to sit there and siphon through all these different options. You know, um, uh, we have a lot of educators on the board, so I'm more sure they would understand this process. And and I think it's very important and and we have to do our due diligence to allow this to fruition just a couple of weeks. And yes, there's a lot of apprehension. I mean, you know, my, my son's going back to school, you know, so. So you know, there's a lot of apprehension. There's a lot of nervousness out there, but you know, we just need to, you know, sit back and 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 take these concerns because they're extremely serious, of course. And and and, you know, come up with a plan and and allow our administration to work out these little, these little uh, you know, kinks, you know, so to speak. Maybe next week, there is an op, an option. But for right now, to be discussing stuff, you know, discussing all this, you know, it's, it's kind of difficult right now, especially when the plan already is put, is put into place. So we need to keep an eye on that plan, of course. But, you know, our administration and our teachers and, and our, and, and, and our principals have always done a good job of gathering the information and then just pulling it out back to the board. Or to Dr. Carmen anyway, so, so, but yeah, Doc, there is, there is some concerns out there. And, and of course, I appreciate Ms. Silva, you know, all your last comments. It is true. We're here protecting both sides. You know, we gotta protect our kids and our staff, but I mean, you know, it, it's not gonna stop people. I mean, I'm telling you guys right now. You know, it's going up, the, the COVID's going back up. So it's gonna, it, it's gonna get, it's gonna get, you know, a little, a little stickier here in the near future. So we just stick together and be open-minded and, and supportive of everyone.
Can I, can I say?
Can I say something?
Okay.
Yeah.
I have one question. I had one, I have some of my teachers that, that called me asking, at the end of the day, who are the ones that are supposed to disinfect their, the classrooms? Like say the, the students that are going to the, to campuses already, like to clean their computers, to clean their desk. Who is supposed to be disinfecting all of that in, in their classrooms? I, it's just a question that I needed to know. I know that, that the, some say that, that the custodians, but then others are being, the teachers are being made, uh, you know, to do their cleaning themselves. And they don't, some of them don't have the, the means or supplies, like gloves and disinfecting, uh, things. How, who's supposed to, who isn't in charge of cleaning, disinfecting the room at the end of the day?
Should be the custodians. That's not the teacher's responsibility.
They're not doing it, but some are not doing. According to some teachers, some of the teachers are being asked that they are the ones that are supposed to be cleaning their classrooms. And I don't think that's.
That's, that's what we've been hearing also.
That's not okay.
Thank you, Ms. Yanis, yes.
That's what we've been hearing. What I, what I'd like to know is, have we spoken, uh, not to the principal, but to the teachers, the persons that are actually in the classroom to give us some suggestions or, or, you know, so that way they don't feel like we're just pushing them into something. I know that we're protecting them. We've got everything in place, but there's still some apprehension. And I think that if we speak to them, that would be much better, that we're concerned. Absolutely, we're concerned. That's our main priority, are the children and, and the teachers and, and everybody. It's not just any, you know, so I'm just saying if we're speaking not to the principals, but to the actual teachers that are in the classroom, are we getting any type of feedback from them is what I, I know. And the other question is also i- if we're using the custodians to clean everything, how time-consuming is it? And do you have enough personnel? Or are they having to work extra hours also? So that, those are other things to keep in mind as well.
Yes.
Okay, so a lot of questions. I usually like to take one at a time, but I didn't have a chance. Um, are, are custodians, are, are charged with cleaning those classrooms at the end of the day? There are, there are districts across the state that are changing classrooms with their students. And those teachers are required to clean those desks in between, uh, before the kids come in. My, my son teaches and coaches in a district up in, uh, in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. And in between classes, he has to clean his own desk. Because there's no way the custodial staff would be able to accommodate that with, with the changing of classes each period. But the way that we're set up, where our students are not, are not leaving, our custodians just need to hit those desks, uh, at, at the end of the day. And since we have so few students back, it, they should not be, um, they should be meet that need and clean every single one of those desks. It, it's really a quick process when they spray and wipe. Um, and then we have foggers that we, I think, use weekly, uh, to make sure we're getting everything. It's just as clean as we can. But, um, so far, we have not had to, uh, to hire additional custodial staff. Um, now, as more kids come back, it's a possibility. You might have to give overtime or, or add some FTEs on. Uh, but to date, again, with very low numbers, we are able to, uh, to accommodate that cleaning. And, uh, and I, I will follow up with the campuses, uh, during this week and make sure that, uh, we're clear that our custodians are cleaning and our teachers are teaching.
So they, you said they use foggers? Do they use UV, like UV ray, like the UV or just a fogger?
These are, uh, these are not UV. These are, yeah, they're a mister, they're a fogger. Um, now, we did, we do have a, a company that we brought in and we'll probably bring them back again in December. They did, um, a fogger, but it was electrostatically charged. So it stayed on the surface for up to thirty days, I think. Um, it, it cost a little bit of money, but, um, we will look at doing that type of cleaning probably again in December. And then we'll evaluate where we are. We may bring them back on a monthly basis.
Yes, I think so. As soon as, you know, we start seeing that there's an increase in COVID cases and so forth, then that would be a wonderful, like, idea for us to think about bringing back, because it is, of course, our utmost concern for anybody. And so we want them to know that. And sometimes I feel that they don't think that we're, we're concerned about them. And we are concerned about the students and the staff and every, all the administrators. So we're very concerned. Uh, it, and, and we're, we're listening, uh, but sometimes there's only certain ways you can handle situations. And there's no other way. Sometimes there's not a A, B, and C, but just maybe an A. So we need to look, to see and to make sure that we're providing the best for, for our staffs and, and, and our children. So, anyway.
Point, point well taken. And I will point out, we had a, a conversation with the commissioner last week. And, um, he argues that, um, not argues, he states that he believes our schools are some of the safest places that our employees or our, our students can be. And, and I agree. When I go to HUB, Walmart, gas station, um, I, I, I think I agree. That our, our schools are the safest place, safest building that, uh, that our kids and our, and our, and our staff could be in.
Exactly. Good work.
I, I wanna thank you guys for your comments. I just also wanna, uh, extend a huge thank you to all our staff, Doc, and the principals at the, at the local level of every campus. Uh, this are trying times. Uh, it's not easy. Um, uh, as you see, the dialogue that goes behind the scenes as far as what needs to get done, how it needs to get done. But, um, you know, I just wanna thank you guys so much for your perseverance and, and, and your consistency to, to making sure our kids have the best education possible. And, uh, we're here to support each and every one of y'all. So, so you guys take care and, and, and trust me, we're listening. So can I have a, uh, a motion to approve, please?
I'm moved.
I got a motion, I got a motion by Mr. Moreno.
Second.
Second, second by Ms. Yanis. All in favor with a show of hands? Thank you all. Appreciate it. Motion carries. A three point six discussion of possible action to approve the memorandum of understanding MOU between San Benito C I S D and Texas Southmost College, uh, T S E for the vocational V N program for the twenty twenty-one school year, Dr. Carmen?
Yes, sir. And actually, I think this is supposed to be twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, but I would let Ms. Alvarado discuss this, this MOU and this great advantage for our students.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can y'all hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Ma'am.
Okay, um, I had a, a meeting with, uh, with Texas Southmost College, uh, about a month ago. Um, they reached out to us with an opportunity for us to be part of a, uh, program with other neighboring school districts on an L V N program, a V N, but it's an L V N program for our students. Um, so we listened, um, and we discussed, um, the MOU. Uh, we just discussed, then, then they, they came back and met with me again on a possible MOU. Um, thi- this program would be, um, uh, we would start talking to students as sophomores, um, tenth graders, and this program would start in their junior year. It's a very intense program, but I know we have the students at San Benito High School who could be, you know, part of a program like this. So I came to Dr. Carmen and we spoke and we felt like we wanted to be a part of this MOU. We may not, you know, the, 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 uh, criteria is, is pretty rigorous. Um, the classes are pretty difficult, but like I said, I know we have students who could be a part of this. And when they would, uh, finish, they would have, uh, an L V N degree. So I, uh, you know, bringing this forward to you all, this is for next year. Again, this is for the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year. Um, this MOU, um, because if we're going to start, we need to start talking to our sophomores in the spring. Um, and setting the criteria, that the, these classes would take place at Texas Southmost College in Brownsville. So we would, we would be transporting our students to Brownsville. Um, so I don't want to not have that opportunity. I don't know how many students, um, you know, would be interested, but it'd be an opportunity for our students, um, at the high school. So I'm bringing it before the, the board, uh, as an MOU, um, to start a conversations, uh, with our students, uh, for next year.
Ms. Alvarado, you just mentioned that this, uh, MOU would be for next school year, twenty-one, twenty-two?
Yeah, it says, what, what the MOU is gonna go into play, but we won't have students physically over there until next year.
Okay.
The fall.
Right, but the MOU would start now, because they would have to start the admission, the recruiting and talking to our students.
Testing, okay.
Mm-hmm. What I, what I wanna make sure, Ms. Alvarado, is that we're keeping track of, you know, from the first semester to the second semester, how many children or how many students stay in that, uh, in that first semester and then follow up with the second semester? Because sometimes people don't know that if they see blood, some, some people tend to faint. And then it ends up that they're, that they're really not meant to go to that field.
Okay, no, you're exactly right, ma'am. You're exactly right.
That we need to make sure that we're tracking that from the, from the first semester to the second and to how many, how many actually graduate and follow through. So we wanna make sure that, uh, that, and see how many, you know, so that, that's gonna be, um, something that we can make sure that we, uh, keep on top of. Uh, so we can try.
Very rigorous program. I'm sure you had a chance to look over the MOU. Anything below a C, they would drop from the program. But like I said, I know we have students.
Yes, yes, yes. It's a wonderful opportunity, but just, we just do also need to make sure how many of them complete this program. Uh, and, and, and so forth, so that we can start doing that. But I, it's a wonderful thing. Actually, I have a sister who's an L V N, and that's how she started, so it's.
And as, as I spoke, yes, and as I spoke to Dr. Carmen, this is a pipeline for students. So then maybe that'll trigger them going into the R M program when they graduate. That's.
Awesome.
Absolutely. Great.
I have a question. So are these kids being introduced to the health professions ahead of time?
Um, you know, I, I know they have to have had, uh, they have to have a certain GPA. They have to have a certain, uh, yeah, they have to have had certain credits, um, leading up. And that's why we're gonna start the conversations right now with them. Um, because it's gonna be a select group that would qualify, or students that would qualify for this program.
And I got, I got a question, Ms. Alvarado, and hopefully, um, it's gonna be a silly question, but what's the, uh, uh, the financial impact? As far as our, our per credit or per, per class, or how, how is that gonna work out?
So if you look at the page, we would be considered, um, I believe we're, we are considered out district. I was wanting to talk to them. So if you look, um, there, the tuition schedule is there, uh, their junior year, first semester, senior year, third semester, um, high school, uh, their senior year, and they actually finish the summer after they graduate. That's the last semester. And if you look, there's, that includes, um, that is a tuition. And on the next page, there's additional costs for their, um,
Uniforms.
And uniforms and scrubs and so on. So I, I, uh, spoke to Mr. Rosa, our C T director, and I, I'm sure we could, the budget would allow for us to have um, a few students in the program if they meet the criteria.
It's about a hundred thousand muscle manuals. It's a give or take a hundred thousand for twenty students, more or less.
Yeah, we, yeah, that, that's.
You know, it's, right, I, I don't wanna, you know, I wanna compliment the, you know, Ms. Alvarado for, for bringing that to light. I think it's very extremely important, somebody that's in the healthcare industry like myself. You know, I, I know the impact that, that, you know, that it has and, and to develop these students that are ready to work right out of high school is huge. You know, the C T, the C T program in itself, you know, uh, uh, is, is great here in our school district. So if we can get those, those kids' job ready, as soon as they get out, it'll be, it'll be a huge advantage for them. That'd be great. Well, thank you, ma'am. I appreciate that. Can I have a motion, please?
So I'm moving.
I got, I got a motion by Ms., Ms. Weaver. Can I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Ms. Yanis. All in favor with a show of hands? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to the agenda, uh, three point seven, discussion of possible action to approve the memorandum of understanding MOU between San Benito, C I S D and Texas A and M Agricultural Life four H chapter agreement for the twenty twenty-one school year. Ms. Alvarado?
Yes, sir. This is a, a yearly program or MOU that, uh, I bring before you. Um, Mi- Mrs. Ramit, uh, Nancy Ramirez-Gossas, who's our after-school program director, um, has been using, um, the, this, uh, the Texas A and M Agro- AgriLife four H charter. Um, and again, it's free of charge, um, but they, um, they offer, um, our district by providing them free training, supplies in robotics, photography, horticulture, agriculture, health, cooking classes, coding and fine arts. So these are just some, some avenues for our students' after-school program. Um, and again, it's free of charge and, um, I've worked with them in the past. They're a great, uh, a great entity.
Great. That's awesome. I'll take advantage of these opportunities. Great. Can I have a motion, please? I have a motion by Ms. Weaver. I got a motion by Ms. Weaver. Uh, can I have a second? Mr. Moreno, I got a second by Mr. Moreno. All in favor by show of hands? Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move on to three, uh, agenda three point eight, discussion of possible action to approve the memorandum of understanding MOU between San Benito C I S D and the Girl Scouts of Great South Texas, of the Greater South Texas for the twenty twenty-one school year. Ms. Alvarado?
Yes, this is a, uh, an MOU I'm bringing before you. Uh, Girl Scouts is a wonderful program to, uh, you know, instill leadership, uh, qualities in our younger, uh, girls. And so with this MOU, they're asking to bring some information to our schools and, um, maybe have, uh, one or even two, uh, troops established by, uh, you know, hoping to, uh, recruit, um, some Girl Scouts from our school district or from our, or from San Benito. And they usually go through the schools. That's an easy way to talk to all the students.
I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Okay.
My, my expertise is in mental health and I was a director here in San Benito for a few years, uh, be- before I decided to move on and have my own practice. Um, so I do have a question on this because of the, I noticed here it says that they will be providing skills such as life skills and individual growth. And when it comes to curriculums that are character-based, you all have a policy in place also where the, any curriculum that is, that falls under guidance and counseling should be brought up to the parents. So the parents can look at this curriculum and they can decide if this is appropriate for the children or not. And we have to consider here in the valley, the kids', um, their values, the parents' values. What are the values for the parents? You know, whether it's religion-wise, whether it's developmental-wise, uh, gender-wise. Um, we have to pay attention to what is okay with the parents for their kids to be receiving any kind of curriculum development. And so for this, I'm going to make a suggestion that the director of counseling is involved. If he hasn't, um, as well, having maybe like, uh, a parental advisory committee, uh, that's combination of educators with parents. So that way they can look at this curriculum and they can view it and decide if this is something that's appropriate for their kids. Um, and when you're dealing with curriculums, just like you do with the teaching academic curriculums, you wanna make sure that these curriculums are also research-based, that they've, um, been studied already and that, and that they show if they're, they are effective or not. And that it's also, uh, norm-based for our own populations also. Cause I know that Girl Scouts is something that's nationwide, so we wanna know that, that, that this is something culturally appropriate for our kids. And then the other concern is, um, from what I'm reading here, uh, cause I don't have a copy of the curriculum, but based on the informational sheet that we have here, what I saw is that, um, somebody from the Girl Scouts will be providing lessons for the students, uh, with a facilitator from the after-school program. So my concern there is also, um, are there going to be background checks being, being done on them or fingerprinting? That's gonna be done on these people that will be providing lessons to the kids. Cause I wouldn't want, uh, any kid to be affected, uh, negatively.
Of course, ma'am, and, and all, anybody coming to work with our students, whether it's the after-school program or in, or, or all, uh, we do do a background check on the aisles, on the line, anybody coming to work with our students.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve?
I'm actually making a recommendation to, um, to table it and let the, and see if, that y'all can establish a parental advisory committee to look at this curriculum before it's approved.
Okay, Ms. Alvarado, do you have a, a, I know she was elaborating on that. Can you, just for the board's sake, can you just go, I mean, as, as far as what, what this process is with the Girl Scouts? I mean, I know it's an option. The parents have an option either to allow their kids to do it or not allow them to do it. Um, it happens outside of school all the time, but can you just, you know, brief the board on something and, 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 and prove to us why it's, it's such a great avenue for our kids currently?
So this is, this is coming from our after-school program. Uh, uh, again, these are programs that we offer our students, you know, after school. Um, and, um, I, I know that they do have to have permission to be part, a part of this program. Um, I, I've always worked with the Girl Scouts and, you know, again, I've never had issues, but I, I, I'm hearing what Ms. Lopez is. I, I've always worked with the Girl Scouts and, you know, again, I've never had issues, but I, I, I'm hearing what Ms. Lopez is saying, and I'm writing all this down. But, um, parents must give consent for, um, them to be a part of, of the Girl Scout, uh, program. Um, and I don't even know if there'd be enough, and, and I'm, I'm looking, uh, to have a troop. But, um, Mrs., uh, our director of after-school program, um, brought this before me, uh, for something that where she's working with, with the after-school program. Again, uh, parents have the, um, they have to give consent to approve for their child to be a part of any program that we offer.
Ms. Alvarado, if, if I may, I'm sorry, excuse, sorry for interjecting, but I'm also, once again, looking at the memorandum of understanding. Is there a typo there or am I, again, uh, uh, am I wrong? It says this agreement is entered effective December 1st, 2020 through June 18th, 2020?
Yeah, it's a typo.
You see what I'm saying on the actual MOU?
We haven't even brought him in, sir. We haven't even, because we haven't even started the after-school program just yet. Actually, we started, uh, today. But I don't think this, this program started. So yes, it would be for this year, starting, starting this month, if, if we do get enough students for this program.
Okay, and I'm just going to read to you all right here on F F, F F E A Digo. And, uh, Mr. Flores, you can advise us on this. What I'm seeing here, it says, uh, "All materials including curriculum to be used during the year must be available for a parent or guardian to preview during school hours. Materials or curriculum not included in the materials available on the campus for preview may not be used." Okay, and so that's my concern, and that's why I'm suggesting that you all also form a committee or talk to your director, your counseling director, because this is a program that can affect students developmentally.
But this is during school hours, and it's not going to be during school hours. It's going to be in the after-school program. I don't know if it's the same or it's different or what.
A, a character development program. So best practice would be to have your mental health professionals look at the curriculum and see if it's age-appropriate and, uh, developmentally appropriate.
But I guess I'm having to, I don't think they would have provided it if it was going on in other schools if it wasn't, if it wasn't appropriate for kids. I mean, I understand this whole dialogue back and forth, but I, I, I think, okay, Mr. Flores, can you please answer the, uh, the, um?
Well, the, the, if the question is, does this comply with the local policy? Now, my understanding of what the local policy is, that it has to be made available. I, I don't know what, how this curriculum, at what point it would or would not be made available for, for scrutiny before it's, it, it's incorporated or made available to the students. So that logistically, I guess, we're going to have to, to get with Ms. Alvarado to discuss, to make sure it does comply with the, uh, local policy.
But the parents have to consent to it anyway. If they want to, if they want to do it or not.
Yeah, it's apparent consent. Yeah, it's not, it's not supposed to be for every student.
Would be made available to the parents. Is that correct?
I, I guess, like, I'm seeing both, both, both points, but, uh, again, if, uh, the parent, more often than not, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, that, you know, the students are not going to participate in any program like that without parental consent. However, I'm trying to understand Ms. Lopez's point as well. Before they, before a parent consents to it, it might be a good idea for the parents to be, maybe have a presentation on what the curriculum is, what, what they're, what to expect, so that, that, you know, if it's something that isn't age-appropriate or if it's something that they, that doesn't, abide by their cultural values or whatever, they can opt out. So I'm seeing both sides.
Right, and, and I'm assuming, I'm assuming from the, from the history here, that most of the time that, you know, these, these kids are, they need a, a, you know, parental approval to begin with. That's what I'm, I mean, that's what.
And usually these, the Girl Scouts is usually outside of the schools. So this is a program that's trying to come into the school. And so, and the other thing is, they'll be selling cookies. Who's going to be in charge of that? And if the girls don't sell the cookies, will the parents have to pay all of that out of pocket? And with the COVID thing going on right now, will the girls have to be going out and selling cookies to people? That's a concern also.
Right, right. I, I think for me here, it just, it just, once again, we're just trying to enrich our kids all the way around, you know, and provide them the opportunities to, uh, you know, to, to grow in different, in, in different areas. So, you know, I move that we, that we vote on it, and if it, you know, if it fails, it fails, but, you know, um.
I will abstain. If you can put that on the records, I will abstain because my recommendation is to get your, uh, counseling director involved with a committee with parents.
Mr. Lopez, just with all due respect, was it, was it not, uh, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Flores, was it not your recommendation as well, at, at, when you just spoke, to, to follow up with, have Ms. Alvarado follow up on it before we even, uh, approve it?
I, I'm not giving a recommendation. I'm just saying that based on the way it's written, I can't determine, just based on this MOU, what the, what exactly the protocol would be to determine whether or not it complies with the board policy. I, I can't make a recommendation of one way or the other. My, my understanding would be that the school, based on this MOU, could still, uh, assure that, uh, school policy is complied with with regard to any curriculum that may be provided to the students.
So let me, let me check real quick, and, and, um, just to give the in, the input from administration. Um, I was never in Girl Scouts. I don't have a, a dog in this fight. I'm not promoting it or denying it. I, I, I did not. But I, I, I think the board policy that we're referencing here, F F E A, uh, references a comprehensive school counseling program. And so I, I think the first question is, does Girl Scouts qualify as a comprehensive school counseling program? If it does, then it states that all materials including curriculum, uh, to be used during the year must be available, just as Ms. Lopez stated. Um, and, and above that, it, it says that we must adopt guidelines to ensure that written consent is obtained from the parent, legal guardian, or other person entitled to enroll the student. So I, I think that's the first question we need, we need to answer. Um, and I don't know, Mr. Flores, we're putting you on the spot here an awful lot all of a sudden.
I, I would have, what I would have to do is, is look at the current policy and see how that, whether or not this even applies to the policy or not, and, and without having that opportunity.
And if I may, um, when it comes to the comprehensive school counseling program, it does have the guidance curriculum, which is any curriculum that you're doing, using to teach students, to help them develop themselves. That's on where it says on page one, on the bottom. It explains the guidance curriculum, and then if you go on to page two, um, on number three, it has personal and social development. So this is where I'm seeing that there is a connection here to this program, because it is connecting it to their social development and personal development. So.
Lopez, I'm, I'm following right along with you on the, on the policy, and I, and I read what you're reading. And, and if that's the case, then it does say the school counselor shall design. And so if we're looking at district-wide, then that would make sense if the school counselor, a coordinator, would, uh, would design the developmental guidance.
Yes. I think Ms., Ms. Lopez is correct, and I think we should move to table this until we're able to, uh, have a committee set up for that. That would be the best interest of everybody, for the student, the parents, and the district.
An appropriate motion, move to table, and then, uh, you would seek a second and, and take a vote on that matter.
Okay, sure. Okay, and then we'll just bring it up later once we have all the questions answered. Okay?
Yeah.
Great. Okay. Can I have a motion to table, please?
I motion to table.
Okay, can I have a second? Second, Ms. Giannis. All, all in favor to move to table? Okay. Item table.
And I'll look into the matter as far as the legal issues and.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, it's going to the three, agenda item three point nine, discussion of possible action to approve, uh, the desktop computers and laptops for career in technology, education, C T E instructional use. Dr. Carmen?
That would be me or, I'm sorry. It's no problem. So we want to, we have some computers, some, some desktops that are, that are five years old in our C T department. Our C T classes use these, uh, regularly with, with their classes. So we're looking at replacing some laptops, um, uh, replace them with laptops. Uh, some, some with laptops and some with desktops at both V M A and at, uh, San Benito High School. And we do, we are using our C T E monies for this. Mr. Fernando Rosa went, uh, had, uh, meets with these teachers and the principals, and that is needed, uh, to make sure our classes are successful.
So we are assuming that because we've got the quotes here that we are purchasing, we're purchasing them from Dell, and we're not purchasing them from a site vendor. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
So, and all these computers, when we do purchase, they all come with, you know, with, um, with, uh, with rep help assistance and all that other stuff and warranty and all that good stuff, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
They'll be used in our electric technology class, in our health science technology class, our health science class, principles of medical terminology, and our auto technology class.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So are these, are these classes that didn't have computers?
No, they had computers, Mrs. Lopez. They're just, we need to replace them with newer ones for the curriculum that they're using.
These quotes that we're getting, uh, Ms. Alvarado, they are brand-new computers. They're not refurbished, correct? They're brand-new.
They're brand-new, sir.
Okay.
And those are going to be used almost immediately, I'm, I'm assuming.
Yes, as soon as.
And I'm only talking because if we're going to end up, uh, storing them, and they're not using them, and then the warranty runs out, and then we try to turn them on and they don't work.
No, they're going to be replaced immediately, Mrs. Giannis.
Okay, great.
Yeah, it's, it's not like the last time, years back, that they purchased all those computers and, and they weren't used. I don't know what happened, and it was, remember?
And then they tried to, and then they tried to use them, and then I believe that the warranty, they didn't work, and then the warranty.
And that was money, our money, yard tax money that was spent.
Exactly, yeah. Thank you, ma'am. You remember that story.
I remember. I don't want to go there.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve, please? I got, I got, I got a motion on the floor by Mr., Mr. Moreno. Can I have a second?
I second.
I have a, I have a second, Ms. Weaver. All in favor with a show of hands? Motion carries. Thank you. Then we want to three point ten, discussion of possible action to approve the option to extend the evaluator service for the after-school program, a 21st century, circle nine, year four grant. Ms. Alvarado?
Yes, sir. Um, as part of cycle nine, uh, we must have an, an external evaluator, um, conduct an evaluation of our program, um, before the end of the year. So, um, we have been, um, Mrs. Linda Lanis has been our external evaluator. She is very knowledgeable with the 21st century grant. She will be conducting, uh, this one, um, because it's our last year with cycle nine. She is the one that is currently, uh, writing our new grant. So if we do get granted, she will not be able to participate as our external evaluator, um, if we do get that grant, and we hope to get that grant. But she is e- evaluating this grant because she was not the one that wrote the grant. And she does a very good job as our external evaluator.
When it comes, when it comes to evaluators, are there bids that are placed for this, or how do you all select the evaluator?
Yes, um, this is an extension to, uh, uh, an R M, probably a quote that was, uh, put out, uh, or, um, was sent out, and, uh, every, and they did that probably, um, when they started this process, so we're just extending her because she's done a great job and consistency is very important with this grant.
And you mentioned that this is the last year on this, with this grant, we're hoping to get it.
That's correct, Ms. Moreno. I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
The, you said this is the last year of this cycle nine grant?
That's correct. And we're finalizing the grant to apply for cycle 11. I'm, we're in the middle of that right now.
So hopefully we get this grant. However, what happens after this grant ends if you don't get it?
Then we won't, we won't have the grant.
You won't have any funds at all for, uh, the program? Or have you set aside money for that?
We have, we have our, some of our campuses that are, um, non-grant, and we do have some programs at our schools that are non-grant right now. So that'll be something that we will look at, uh, if we do, are not granted.
Correct me if I'm wrong. If the, if the grant isn't, if, if we don't get the new grant, basically, I mean, we, we get all these grants with the hopes that we can, we can, uh, uh, sustain it if the grant runs out. And so then the district has the option, uh, either, you know, using local funds or whatever we have to, to, to continue with those, that personnel. Is that, that is correct, right? To correct, to continue with those programs using local funds if need be?
We would have to identify, yeah, we can either use federal funds, like Title I, for example, uh, we keep local funds, 199, um, assuming it fits into our budget. Now, with, with the amount of money you get from these types of grants, uh, they'd have a pretty robust program.
Right, right.
Uh, we can't necessarily put that same amount of money, uh, dollar for dollar, but certainly we can have after-school programs uh, to some level, just like we do at our non-grant sites right now, Mr. Moreno. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Can I have a motion to approve, please? Now, a motion, but my, I can have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Mr. Moreno. All in favor with a show of hands? Motion carries. Thank you. Then move on to, uh, agenda three point 11, discussion of possible action to approve the revision of the 2021 compensation plan.
Good evening, board members. The revision, the revision to our compensation plan is on page 15, and the revision is to communicate a stipend that has been paid out to the handler of our canine and the amount of $1,200 paid out bi-annually in two parts.
Get 600 and 600.
And that's the only revision being brought to the board at this time.
Often does a canine make their round, uh, around the district?
About twice a week, and we have a handler that's being trained right now, getting certified. So we should be completing that very soon over the next week or so.
And, and those visits, they are documented, uh, Dr. Cruz?
Yes, sir. All of that is documented by our police staff.
Okay, thank you.
Can I have a motion on the floor, please? Same motion?
A motion.
I got, I got a motion by Ms. Giannis. Can I have a second?
I second.
Second by Ms. Lopez. All in favor with a show of hands? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
Then we want to agenda, uh, three point 12, discussion of possible action to approve the revision of the Board of Trustees' operating procedures. Dr. Carmen?
Sir, so Mr. Lopez, you have in, uh, board docs, some updated board procedures. On a page one, under number one and number two, you see some highlighted areas there. Um, recently, in an update that the board approved from Tasby, there was a change to B E local. And so this, uh, change to our, uh, board operating procedure simply reflects a policy that this board has already approved. And essentially, instead of two members, um, being required to submit a request to add an agenda item, it is now to one board member may request to add an agenda item, as long as they do so at least four days prior to the board meeting. Uh, that allows us to have it on the agenda, uh, 72 hours, and posted 72 hours prior to the actual meeting. So on the front page, on page one, those are the only changes, and again, those correspond to board policy that's already been approved. On the back, under superintendent evaluation, it's not highlighted for some reason, under number eight, board members to evaluate the superintendent, et cetera, et cetera, uh, each year in Sept, in September. Uh, for some reason, our procedure said January, but, um, superintendent is evaluated on the anniversary, and I started September 4th, 2017. I have been evaluated each year, and so it's just a change there. I, I'm not sure how January was on there to begin with. Uh, but that is a second change. And then, under number 10, or after number 10, uh, you'll see that we have, um, entered in all of the new trustee information. And those are the submitted changes to the board operating procedures.
You said that was B E local, uh, B E local requirement. Is that what you said, sir?
B.
B E local. Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Dr. Carmen, the, the part about, uh, I understand that you're, uh, you're, uh, on, on your, uh, what is it, your evaluation, uh? Where were you referring to that on, on here? I, I couldn't see it. Was it on number eight, did you mention?
Yes, sir. Number eight starts on the bottom right of page one. But if you go onto page two, really paragraphs, they're separated down, one, two, three, four, five, six.
I see it, where it says January. Okay, but again, you, you mentioned that previously that you're, uh, you, you started in November. Is that correct?
September.
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 And I believe if you, if you picked up a printed-out copy on Friday, it says January still. And I believe if you, if you picked up a printed-out copy on Friday, it says January still, but it's September. And that is the other recommendation to the board that aligns to, like I said, to my hiring date.
Okay.
And to my last three evaluations.
That wasn't on, on the agenda, number 10? Number eight, because I see here one. I'm sorry. So what's on number 10 is number one over here. Okay, and so where does number eight fall under? I just want to make sure we got it covered right, and if we can approve it or not, if it wasn't listed.
This is under the, at the item 312, revisions to the Board of Trustees' operating procedures. And then on those procedures, there are changes under Sec, Section One. Regarding BE local, Section Two regarding BE local. Under Section Eight regarding the date of superintendent evaluation. And then after number 10, we have updated the, the names of all the new trustees. But all that is under Agenda Item 312.
Yeah, I think she's talking about the agenda, Dr. Carmen. Where it says on the rationale, on the revisions are as follows. On the actual agenda item detailed, is what she's talking about, that it's not listed, number eight. That's what she's saying. So it might have been left out. On the agenda.
The actual packet.
Oh, right. So on the, on the attachments. If we print it out for you Friday, we had not changed January, December, September. We did catch that. I think we talked about it in our district orientation Friday morning with the new trustees. But we didn't type it in. We didn't type it in and upload it until after those were already printed for you all. It is in Board Docs, so that attachment has been updated.
Can I have a motion, please?
I moved.
Oh, sure.
I got a motion by Mr. Moreno. I have a second by Ms. Weaver. All in favor of the show of hands? Motion carries. Thank you. They move on to item 3.13, discussion of possible action to approve board minutes. Can I have a, a motion approved, Board members?
I, I'm going to have to abstain for regular board meetings on October 13th, October 26th, because we were not here as board members or anything. As was. Yeah.
Also move to accept them.
Okay.
Did you hear me too, Mr. Lopez? Did you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
And also, thank you.
Okay, that's fine. Yes. Can I have, I got a motion by Ms. Weaver. Can I have a second? I have a second by Ms. Janie. All in favor of the show of hands?
I'd like to abstain as well. Mr. Lopez, with all due respect, since I wasn't a trustee yet, for those other two, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. Are we going to close session according to the Texas Government Code, Open Meetings Act? The board may, may move to, to close session for the following reasons. Session 551071, for the purpose of private consultation with a board attorney on any and all subject or matters authorized by law. Section, section 551, that 074, for the purpose of considering appointing, employment, evaluation, reassignment duties, discipline or dismissal of a public officer or employee. Or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. 4.1, employment resignation, retirements. 4.2, discussion and consideration of employment of the Judge Oscar de la Fuente principal. And we retrieve into executive session at exactly 7:06 PM. Okay, we're reconvening to open session at exactly 7:55 PM. 5.2, actions and matters considered in, in closed session. Dr. Carmen?
Thank you, Lopez. I would like to recommend to the board to approve the employment resignations and retirements as discussed in executive session.
Can I have a motion, please?
I moved.
Is that Mr. Moreno?
Yes, I moved.
Okay.
Second.
I got a motion by Mr. Moreno. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
I have a sec, I have a second by Ms. Lopez. All in favor of the show of hands? Motion carries. Thank you. Then move on to agenda item 4.2, discussion and consideration of employment of Judge Oscar de la Fuente principal. Dr. Carmen?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. It is my pleasure to be able to recommend to the board, the next principal at Judge Oscar de la Fuente Elementary. This is Mary Julie Aguilera. Good evening, Mrs. Aguilera.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just made the recommendation to the board. To promote you to the principal at Judge Oscar de la Fuente Elementary, and I am awaiting their response. No pressure.
Do they have a motion, please?
I move that we, excuse me, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we go ahead and accept Ms. Aguilera as the principal of Judge Oscar de la Fuente.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. Can I have a second, please? Can I have a second?
Can anybody hear?
We can hear.
Can I have a second?
There's none.
I've answered it already. I've said seconds twice.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I couldn't hear you. Okay, I got, I got a second. Well, all, all in favor of the show of hands?
I didn't hear anything.
Lopez, we have some screens out.
Yeah, I got. So I can hear Mr. Corona, but I just can't see him.
Yeah, I see Mr. Silva now. Okay.
Okay, Mr. Corona, now we, now we can see you. Okay, so I have, I have a motion by Ms. Silva, and I got a second by Mr. Corona. All in favor of the show of hands, please?
Ms. Weaver, Ms. Weaver.
Yes, I abstain. I abstain. I'm sorry.
On the record, I vote no.
Okay, so hold on, hold on. So it was, it was, it was three for yes? Correct? Ms. Weaver, you abstain?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Weaver abstains. So who hasn't voted yet?
For the record, I'm a no also.
Okay, you're a no?
With all due respect to her, it's a no for me also.
Okay.
No for me.
Okay, so it's a 3-3. No with one abstain. Dr. Carmen? Okay, this time can I have a? A motion to adjourn, please?
Adjourn.
I got a motion by Ms. Yanis. Can I have a second?
Second.
I got a second by Ms. 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 Lopez. All in favor of the show of hands? Okay. We adjourn this meeting at exactly 7:59 PM.